You could waste hundreds of dollars going to an expensive hospital, or you could pay 66% less for the same quality of service at Elite MRI of Lawrence, an open MRI facility. That's right, our prices are 66% less for the same services as a hospital. We offer a comfortable, open-air design in a patient-friendly atmosphere. We also offer same-day evening and Saturday appointments. The radiologist fee is included, and we provide self-pay discounts. It's your money, your time, your health, your choice. When you need an MRI, save money and choose Elite MRI of Lawrence.
The Lawrence County Board of Education's system principals and many members of the community joined each other at the Dublin Country Club in celebrating the 2016 Lawrence County Schools Teacher of the Year program. It was wonderful to see the community turn out with such a wonderful occasion. While enjoying breakfast and the company of educators, their family members and business leaders all enjoyed musical selections played by Ms. Angie Woodall. It was indeed a celebration as Superintendent Dr. Julie Halligood and Associate Superintendents praised these leaders in our educational system for a job well done and recognized each school's teacher of the year with this special video presented by Director of Technology Lance Smith. Please stay tuned with us as we enjoy a look at the 2016 Teacher of the Year recipients from each of our Lawrence County schools. We'll have that video when we come back to Lawrence County Schools' 2016 Teacher of the Year.
Hi, I'm Tim Brady Jr. with Dublin Ford Lincoln, and I'd like to thank all of our loyal friends and customers who have already stopped by to see our brand-new state-of-the-art facility. And if you haven't stopped by, I'd like to invite you to come on out and see what we've done. I want you to know our customers deserve this, and we want you to come be a part of it. Come see us today at 2265 Veterans Boulevard. You'll love the place, you'll love the selection, and you'll love the deal we'll give you. Come see me today.
The Teacher of the Year at East Lawrence Elementary is Garrett Cannon. Mr. Cannon teaches 3rd grade Math, Science, and Social Studies at ELE. He knew early in life that he was called to be a teacher and states that God filled his heart with a passion and love for both children and learning. He has always enjoyed mentoring and coaching children. Mr. Cannon believes the ability to unlock hidden potential in others was a major factor in deciding to enter the teaching profession. With eight years of teaching experience, Mr. Cannon looks forward to many more years of teaching. He states, "I am proud to say that I plan to work and contribute to the field of education in some capacity until I am no longer able." To date, he says his greatest contribution has been how to effectively implement differentiated instruction. Mr. Cannon's classroom mission statement sums up his philosophy of teaching. "My mission is to utilize all instructional strategies necessary to meet the individual needs of every student within my classroom, develop solid personal relationships, and to instill a passion and love for learning in the hearts of all students."
I think Mr. Cannon is a great teacher because he's smart, he's funny, and he works hard.
Mr. Cannon is the best teacher because he lets us watch fun activities, and he dances in the classroom and walks us to the bus.
Mr. Cannon is a good teacher because when he teaches us, he explains it really good, and he lets us do fun activities, and he makes the class really funny.
I think Mr. Cannon is a good teacher because he lets us do fun activities and makes the whole class funny.
Mr. Cannon is the best teacher ever because he lets us watch fun videos, and he lets us do fun activities, he dances in the class, he makes the class wild all the time, and that's why he's the best teacher ever.
This is East Lawrence Elementary School's Teacher of the Year, Garrett Cannon. The Teacher of the Year at West Lawrence Middle School is Jill Hatcher. Ms. Hatcher is a 6th grade teacher at WLM. Numerous former teachers and administrators of Lawrence County strongly influenced Ms. Hatcher's desire to become a teacher in her middle and high school years. She believes they were the best role models that she could have had as a teenager, as she states, "They kept me grounded in my studies, in my family, in excellence, and in Christianity without being about their own faith." Ms. Hatcher always wanted to influence youth and desired to become a different kind of teacher. Her accomplishments in the classroom fueled her growth and desire to become a cheerleading coach and yearbook advisor as well. The relationships she has made throughout the year's teaching and coaching is very rewarding to her. Yet, her greatest accomplishment to date is making them contributing, compassionate, excellent students and members of society. Ms. Hatcher has a message to others in education: Be prepared, be professional, and persevere. She states that God has placed educators in a position that they can influence the lives of children and parents for the positive.
Ms. Hatcher is a great teacher because she's interactive and she relates things to the real world.
Ms. Hatcher, she is a good teacher because when she teaches, she teaches in a fun way.
Ms. Hatcher is a good teacher because she teaches us stuff that we don't know we need to learn, and she does fun stuff with us to get us to learn, like what it means and stuff. And she's also a really good teacher because she's nice to everybody, and she like buckles down on us to get us to do the right thing.
Ms. Hatcher is a good teacher because she's very kid-friendly.
Ms. Hatcher is a good teacher because she has a different quality of teaching. She is very kind and nice, and she does a lot of fun projects.
Ms. Hatcher is a really good teacher, and sometimes you might feel like something you're learning isn't very fun, but she makes it more fun than you really think it would probably be. She encourages you to do your best, and some teachers might not do it as well as she does.
This is West Lawrence Middle School's Teacher of the Year, Jill Hatcher. The Teacher of the Year at East Lawrence Middle School is Sherri Kite. Ms. Kite teaches 7th grade Science and Social Studies at ELM. She had many influential teachers who made her crave a career in teaching. Upon her high school graduation, she actually shook the superintendent's hand and said, "I'll be back in four years." She states that she knew at that moment her path was ready to pursue. A compassionate leader who was strong, fair, and consistent is what Ms. Kite strives to be as an educator. She states that she has been fortunate to work with some very strong leaders that show respect and inspire her. Ms. Kite feels that student growth is the ultimate accomplishment, as confirmed by seeing a former student who lets her know what they were taught and what they remembered about her class. She believes that there is no other job that gives back as much as hers has, and she considers teaching to be the ultimate opportunity.
Ms. Kite's a good teacher because she makes learning exciting by telling how stuff relates to what we're learning on the news and calling crazy people cuckoo much too. She makes us exciting because what we learn, it helps us when we take tests and quizzes, and she puts us in groove so that when we're learning, we can share what we know with other people and then compare our answers and stuff. She's teaches for a long time, I don't know how long, but she has full of experience and knows how to make us really laugh and be happy.
I think Ms. Kite's a great teacher because she makes learning fun, and she always lets us play some type of game with whatever we're learning. And she's been teaching for 19 years, so she's really experienced and all, and she's a really nice teacher.
Ms. Kite's a good teacher because she breaks down what she's teaching and how she teaches it, and she makes us understand it even better.
Ms. Kite is a good teacher because she makes learning fun, and she knows how to teach, and she's been teaching for 19 years, and she keep motivating us and keep our grades straight and...
That Ms. Kite is such a wonderful teacher because Ms. Kite always just makes it fun because social studies is... Social studies really isn't the most interesting subject, but she makes it one of them, and she's just like the best because she just makes everything fun and enthusiastic, and Lord, we have just crack up in there, but she gets the message across and is just the best teacher.
This is East Lawrence Middle School's Teacher of the Year, Sherri Kite. The Teacher of the Year at West Lawrence High School is Meredith Lawhorn. Ms. Lawhorn teaches Biology at WLHS. The decision to become a teacher has been tremendously rewarding for Ms. Lawhorn. She states that she wanted her profession to have a meaningful impact on the others around her and decided teaching high school biology provided a unique way to share her passion. Her goal is to encourage and inspire students to maximize their potential and discover their own passions. Ms. Lawhorn notes that she set a personal goal to strive to have a positive impact on each and every one of her students. She has discovered that students are more engaged in a positive learning environment, and she strives to make every effort to achieve that goal every day. Ms. Lawhorn enjoys learning alongside her students and sets aside time each week for them to explore related topics of what they are currently learning. She feels that this activity allows her to grow as an educator, stay connected to her students, and shows that they are working together. The most important contribution Ms. Lawhorn would like her students to leave knowing is, "I am working toward making them feel confident, competent, and excited about taking the next steps in their lives." This educator feels that as her teaching continues to develop every year, her experience increases in the classroom as well for future students.
Ms. Lawhorn is a good teacher because she's really fun, she always keeps a positive attitude, she makes sure everybody knows everything, and overall, she's a really good teacher, I'm glad to have her.
Ms. Lawhorn is a good teacher because she's funny and she likes to interact with the students, and she doesn't care about much if we do something bad, she just wants us to have fun and learn at the same time.
Ms. Lawhorn's a good teacher because every morning she comes into the school with a great attitude and the willingness to teach us.
Ms. Lawhorn is a good teacher because she's young and knows how to relate to our personal lives, and so it makes it better to understand science.
Ms. Lawhorn is a good teacher because she mixes, you know, the right fun into her class. We have the right balance of working hard and playing hard, you know?
This is West Lawrence High School's Teacher of the Year, Meredith Lawhorn. The Teacher of the Year at East Lawrence High School is Laura Lawrence. Ms. Lawrence teaches 9th grade English at ELHS. She chose teaching as her career after facing challenges in high school English classes. The dedication of her teachers influenced her to not only succeed, but also to enjoy English and develop a love of literature, language, and writing. This love of English is portrayed every day in her classroom. Ms. Lawrence's greatest achievement as a teacher has been learning how to promote respect for her students, subject matter, and for her school. She hopes that a mutual respect between the students and herself will allow them to have a great respect for others. She states that her dedication, both as an instructor and a mentor, is to our students who will become the civic leaders of the future. This educator wants to have a vested interest in each of her students, as well as seeing them succeed in her class, others' classes, and in life in general.
My teacher, Ms. Lawrence, is a nice teacher because she helps me out when I need help, she's always there, and she makes everything understandable for everybody in the classroom. She also helps us when we need help outside of the classroom, and she's always a good person.
Ms. Lawrence is a good teacher because she always thinks about students before herself, and she's funny, and she always considers everyone else.
Ms. Lawrence is a great teacher because she brings fun to the learning environment, and she just makes learning just easy and fun, and it makes me want to come to class every day.
I think Ms. Lawrence is a good teacher because she makes us laugh, and, well, she teaches us what we need to know. She's really fun, and she's really nice.
Ms. Lawrence is a good teacher because, well, I personally had her last year, and I excelled her class, and she always helped me when I needed it, and we always joke around. She's also one of my favorite teachers in this entire school, and I'm glad I actually got to have her.
This is East Lawrence High School's Teacher of the Year, Laura Lawrence. The Teacher of the Year at East Lawrence Primary School is Terri Litke. Ms. Litke teaches 2nd grade at ELP. She states that she knew at a very young age that teaching was always her dream and ambition in life. Several of Ms. Litke's family members were teachers influencing her going into the education profession. She has many fond memories of spending afternoons, evenings, weekends, and summers at school with her mom, which blossomed into a desire to become a teacher. Ms. Litke feels that her desire to encourage others, being around people, and helping others learn fueled her desire to teach. She states, "My life's dream was to use my outgoing personality to reach out to others and inspire a desire to learn and to grow educationally through hard work, desire, and a belief in oneself that anything is possible with dedication to learning." She feels that her classroom and students provide her with an inner peace and a love for life. "When a job is more than a job, but a calling and a piece of your soul, then it is not work, but your life's purpose and teaching is my life's calling and purpose," sums up this educator's philosophy for teaching. Her career allows her to be excited every day and provides her with complete satisfaction.
Ms. Litke is a good teacher because she tells us what she's gonna do today, because she raises our goals when we meet our goals in AR.
Ms. Litke is a good teacher because when she says something and we can do it, she lets us do it.
Ms. Litke is a good teacher because she is so nice, and she always makes sure you pay attention, and if you need help, she always comes and helps you.
Ms. Litke is a good teacher because she helps us learn in a fun way, and she's very nice to us, and she gives us time to do stuff, like go to recess, extra recess when we don't go, when we don't get to go, and she has a lot of stuff for us to do, like read, tell our tests to help us get smarter and better.
Ms. Litke is a good teacher because she loves to learn, and she loves to read because she just wants to make us learn like we never learned before.
This is East Lawrence Primary School's Teacher of the Year, Terri Litke. The Teacher of the Year at Southwest Lawrence Elementary School is Keila Monroe. Ms. Monroe teaches pre-K at SWLE. She dreamed of becoming a teacher as a young girl, but first chose the profession of social worker. When teaching preschool at a local church and experiencing that lightbulb moment when a child would learn to say a new word or recognize the letters in his or her name, Ms. Monroe realized that her calling was in a classroom. She then went back to school to pursue her early childhood education degree. Ms. Monroe felt that one's attitude about school is often formed in the first year and strive to make a difference in children's lives. She feels that one of the most important ways to show this is by giving children a weekly job in her classroom so that they look forward to coming to school each week by valuing their position and excitement for it. Ms. Monroe also promotes hands-on learning rather than just being mere observers in the classroom. Ms. Monroe states that "The desire is for my students to not only enjoy learning, but to love it." She feels there is no greater compliment than the smile of a child. Her desire is to teach in a way that every child feels valued, challenged, and loved. Ms. Monroe states, "My greatest accomplishment as an educator is ensuring that my students' first year is successful, laying the foundation for a successful academic career."
Ms. Keila is nice because she helps us learn.
Ms. Keila, she's a good teacher, and she's a nice one, and she learns all of it. She helps us learn all our letters, she helps us be good, and we be good, and we learn our letters, and we learn. She helps us learn all of stuff that we learn. She's a good teacher. Ms. Cassie, she helps us, and we kind of take our shoes off, but we put them back on when the teacher says to put them back on. She'll tell me how to do lessons, and she teach me how to teach everything.
Because my teacher bought a lot of candies, and a lot of toys, and a lot of books.
Ms. Keila is a good teacher because she makes the line going with smashing.
This is Southwest Lawrence Elementary School's Teacher of the Year, Keila Monroe. The Teacher of the Year at Northwest Lawrence Elementary School is Lori Passmore. Ms. Passmore fulfilled her childhood dream of becoming an elementary school teacher and is currently teaching in her 27th year in the classroom. She comes from a line of teachers on her mother's side, but Ms. Passmore states that Ms. Henrietta Lindsay, her 2nd grade teacher, probably had the greatest influence on her decision to teach by the way she demonstrated patience and kindness, as well as setting high expectations for her students. Ms. Passmore carries on that same tradition with her students. Ms. Passmore believes all students deserve to be given the same opportunity for an excellent education, and that it is her job as a teacher to find the right strategy to help her students achieve that aha moment. She states, "Our students need to be taught life skills, how to be a gracious winner and a good loser, to accept the things that we have no control over and change the things that we do control." One of Ms. Passmore's most rewarding moments of teaching is having students come back year after year and talk about things they remember about her class. She states, "It makes me know that I am right where God intended for me to be."
Ms. Passmore is a good teacher because she helps us when our math, when we don't know what to do.
She's always a good teacher because I like how she would put the multiplication into a game for us, and I just think she's really nice to go with it. She just does a lot of things to help us in our class.
Ms. Passmore is a good teacher because she lets us learn while we do fun stuff, and because she lets us do fun stuff on the computer, like some dog, and we get to do AR.
Ms. Passmore is a good teacher because she lets us use technology, and she's sweet.
Ms. Passmore is a good teacher because she lets me file papers and write on the board, she gives me hugs in the morning.
Ms. Passmore is a great teacher because she's good, she's a great math teacher, and she's a very... And we have fun doing math with her.
This is Northwest Lawrence Elementary School's Teacher of the Year, Lori Passmore. The Teacher of the Year at the Diamond Academy is Luciana Turner. Ms. Turner teaches Science at the Diamond Academy, as well as being the counselor and advisor. Her parents were both educators in Lawrence County, which strongly influenced her decision to become a teacher upon her high school graduation. Ms. Turner states, "For me, teaching provides an opportunity for continual growth and learning. One of my hopes as an educator is to instill a love of learning to my students as I share my own passion for learning with them. I feel there is a need for compassionate, strong, and dedicated individuals who are excited about working with students and helping them accomplish the goals that they have set for themselves. In our competitive society, it is important for students to not only receive a solid education, but to work with someone who is aware of and sensitive to their individual needs. I am that person, and I will always strive to be the best educator that I can be."
Ms. Turner is a great teacher, she always puts her students in front of herself.
Ms. Turner is a good teacher because she always finds a way to brighten your day.
Ms. Turner is a wonderful teacher because she's heartwarming, and she'll try to help anybody any way she can. She's fun, she's funny, and she likes to let the whole class have fun.
Ms. Turner is a good teacher because she motivates you and helps you understand your lessons better.
Ms. Turner's a good teacher because she makes us feel comfortable enough to talk to her about anything, so she's actually more than a good teacher, she's like a good friend as well. And she always has a different way of making us laugh, like it's not... It's good, but it's not always strictly school, so she's like a friend as well to us.
This is the Diamond Academy's Teacher of the Year, Luciana Turner.
Thanks to Mr. Lance Smith, Director of Technology, for the video presentation of the 2016 Teacher of the Year recipients. We'll be back with the announcement of the system-wide Teacher of the Year for 2016 in just a moment. Midstate Pools and Spas carries an outstanding line of hot tubs. Just arrived a truckload shipment of marquee spas. Adding a spa to your deck or patio is a great and affordable way to spice up your backyard area. Whether it's for hydrotherapeutic reasons, our pleasure, we can help you find a spa that's right for your needs. All of our spas range from a seating capacity of two to upwards of seven in the Signature Collection. There are also different cabinet colors to choose from, so that you can pick the right color that best fits your area. There are several different add-ons that can be implemented to make your spa even more enjoyable. Some of these include audio systems, LED lighting, LCD waterproof TV, waterfall, and even Wi-Fi remote access from your personal smartphone or tablet. Right now, save 25% off on all-in-stock Telescope and Peak Season Casual Furniture Sets. Telescope Casual is made in America and is the ultimate in outdoor furniture. Also be sure to check out our Fire Tables by Fire Entertainment, also made in America. And you'll love our line of Traeger grills, Traeger, the ultimate grilling experience. And you'll love the new selection of Grizzly Coolers just in at Midstate Pools and Spas. Middle Georgia's most trusted pool and spa dealer. Welcome back to the Lawrence County Schools' 2016 Teacher of the Year Celebration, and now the announcement of the Teacher of the Year.
This last award goes to the system Teacher of the Year, and we have an unbiased group to come and to review all the applicants. This award goes to for the year 2016. The Lawrence County School System recognizes Jill Hatcher as the 2016 Teacher of the Year.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are here with the Teacher of the Year for Lawrence County School Systems, and none other than Jill Hatcher. It was so good when they called your name, it made me feel good because you've taught both my children.
That's right, that's right.
You've taught a lot of children.
Yes.
And very well, mind you.
Thank you so much, thank you.
It's a challenge, isn't it?
It is, it's a challenge, and it's a great privilege, though, just to be, first of all, recognized by the teachers at your school for what you do, and then amazing here to be recognized as the Teacher of the Year because I looked at the other candidates for this and thought... this and thought, wow, look at what they're doing in their classroom, they're so much younger than me, they, you know, I just knew they would blow me out of the water, so wow, what an honor.
When you have so many qualified people, like you say, Jill, you're looking across and you watch the video and you say, Lord, how do they choose one person but to choose you?
It's hard to compare, middle to high, to elementary, yes, it is hard to compare, yes.
So what's the secret of educating children?
L-O-V-E, really and truthfully, you've got to love what you do, you've got to love kids, you've got to love parents, you've got to love administrators, community, yeah, you've just got to love and believe in what you do.
Now, I want to go back just for a moment here and let everybody all across the community who do not know right now who your parents are.
My parents are Roger and Sharon Lord from Dexter, Georgia.
Yeah, and they put a lot of love and a lot of structure and order into your life for you to be able to do what you do today, didn't they?
Right, right. Growing up, everybody said, Jill, you need to be a teacher, you need to be a teacher, I don't want to be a teacher, I want to be different, I want to be something else. And, you know, they had lingo, the teachers all would get together, and they all had this lingo that they talked, and I would just roll my eyes and be like, you know, but I should have listened to them, they probably knew me better than I knew myself, and so, yeah.
Well, they did.
They did.
Look what you do now, you're doing so well.
Creativity, yeah, creativity, there's all kinds of things you can put into teaching, yes.
Now, remind me, how many years you been teaching?
25.
Only 25 more to go.
Only 25 more to go, that's correct.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you so much.
We love you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much.